Welcome. Today is Monday, August 5th, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. This is a meeting in the Greensburg City Council's called order. At this time, if you please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. There may be no old business. Amy, please call.
Jamie Kaye.
Here.
Mark Harmon.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Rodney King.
Here.
Diana McKenzie.
Here.
Daryl Polling.
Here.
Daryl Tressler.
Okay, we will move directly to our one item of business this evening, which is the sort of budget workshop of the 2025 budget for the city of Greensburg. I have provided all of you in your Dropbox folder, the annual budget book as prepared by Reedy Financial Group. This comes at the work and dedication of our department leaderships. As usual, they present their needs, wants, capital items, and then, of course, salaries, longevity, and personnel. The budget this year overall, I hope you had an opportunity to look at the surplus deficit sheet is very good. It's very strong. I commend our department leadership for their work to help make that happen. There was a strong push this year, and I assume will be our first item of discussion, as it usually is, as it relates to frontline employee teammates' salaries and pay. So what I, unless there's some other objection to addressing that first. So what has been proposed to you in the book, as represented on the surplus deficit sheet as well, is a more or less change. This comes from our department leadership about retention and attraction of individuals to our place of employment. What we are proposing and what has been accounted for is a change to the longevity plan. Historically, that has been 1% per year up to 20 years of service. So once you reach 20 years, you sort of max that out. What is in the proposal is to make that 2% per base of base per year going forward up to 10 years of service. And then from year 11 through 20, that would be 0.5% of base per year, making our new cap for a 20-year member of our organization 25%. This is a way that we can better reward and pay those who are with us in the short term and the long term. It gives us the opportunity to be more competitive with other departments and agencies in our surrounding environment without necessarily having to move the base pay up substantially. The goal with this would be if we have someone who is starting with us, they would receive their base, and then within three years would have a 6% incentive to stay with us because they have three years of service, whereas now that's currently a 3% incentive. This would also help those that are in that 10- to 12-year range in that we want them and we want their expertise to remain with us. Leaving our base pay to go somewhere else and start brand-new and losing a 20% longevity incentive makes that much more challenging, makes a much more challenging decision. So this is what's been proposed. It does help every frontline employee in our agency would see a bump from this. If you're a 23-year employee now, you would move to 25% versus the 20 that you are now, or plus or minus, you have percentage points in there. So it does truly move the needle for everyone, whether you've been here one year or 25 years. And that is what's been proposed. Again, this came from our leadership team with the idea for attraction and retention, especially in those numbers in that six-to-10-year range as well. And I will stress once again that that is what the budget is built around. So as you can see, that is affordable, it is doable. It did require, and I want to make this point well-known as well, it did require that our departments maintain their other expenses outside of personnel at a pretty similar level to '24, which they were accommodating in doing. There are a few tweaks in there, there are a few additions and changes, but it really did consume the vast majority of our annual increases to work through the frontline longevity and pay. It is also proposed, and then we can move up to discussion. It is also proposed that a 3% base rate increase for 2025 would also be awarded to all employees, non-salary employees. So in addition to doubling longevity, there's also a 3% raise. There are no changes to health insurance, there are no changes to any other deductions or deductibles. Any questions or comments on that?
No, I guess I don't have any issues with what we're looking to do with longevity or the proposed raise. I think this was some of the things we talked about in several different meetings, and I think this was one of those. We looked at a lot of different ways to cut this, and I think this is one of the best ways to do it.
Okay.
Does this put us, I'm sorry, does this put us a little more competitive as far as salaries are concerned? Or is it no surprise?
Yeah, it helps. There was a lot of discussion about the base pay. The example that gets thrown out all the time is the state police moved their starting tripper to $70,000. Last year, the council moved the Greensburg police to $60,000. So when the discussion was happening surrounding, can we move the base to some number above 60 and closer to 70? There was some discussion about how do we reward those that stick with us for three or four years? And then by producing, and I'm just using them as an example because those are real numbers, but it's applicable to every department, water, wastewater, street, fire, administrative, everybody. And so it does matter, but by continuing to do base increases, but then also adding this longevity, a more rapid longevity increase, it allows us to have those individuals who are three, four, five years with us. It makes it a little less easy to leave because all of a sudden they're making base plus 10%. That's the goal with being a little more retention-oriented.
There are other communities that have an accelerated longevity scale based on what we have too. There are some that are more aggressive than what we're doing here.
Yeah, that's a good point. Other questions on that? Okay, the second phase of that then is working with our salaried individuals and trying to make sure that they also have the ability that we encourage internal growth and promotion that allows an individual to move through our departments and into leadership roles. We have experienced some compression on that. We've been talking about this for a couple of years now as well. And what we sort of, what is proposed in the budget as it stands now is that, and Julie obviously made a very helpful with me figuring out what this number is, but we think about 15% of what the highest possible frontline employee would be. As you all know, our salaried individuals do not receive longevity, they do not receive overtime, they do not receive any type of, you know, for lack of better terms, comp time. They get PTO, they can take comp time, but it's not really built in. So what Julie has done is taken, you know, a base and a 20-year member of our department, of departments, and maybe put in a certain pay to that would allow them to make X. And then we took a number and applied 15% on top of that for our department leadership. If there were department leaders that already were above that, which there were a few, or similar to that, I propose that they receive a 4% base raise this year as well. So it's trying to move those that have substantial compression up, but also making sure that our other department leaders receive a pay increase this year as well. So all the different departments reflect that for the leadership already in the proposed budget. Any questions on that?
Do the 15% is based on the highest-paid employee in that department, maybe 15% above that?
It's yet, yes, in theory, but I want to be sure. It's based on the potential for the highest paying. So if we have, if we don't have somebody in that department that has 20 years, it's still based on that. But obviously, those numbers continue to grow too.
I don't think that it took into account overtime that is possible. It is only like a base pay with longevity.
Yes, that is accurate. So it's, did everybody hear Amy's point? Okay. Any other question on that? Okay, I've given you the first page of the memo, pretty much lays all of that out, inclusive of how the PTO works in some of those. First couple of bullet points on the second page is what we just talked about as it relates. I did include that same type of pay structure for myself and for Amy. In theory, we are those same kinds of individuals that are leading not only our agencies, but also the community. So that is represented in those pays as well. I did, with talking with Jamie, I did make sure that if the council in the future wanted to reduce the elected official's salary, because that gets complicated, we added my raise as an educational stipend so that that can be added to the pay, the salary ordinance, but it is not a part of my base pay, it's not a part of my statutory payment, so that it can be removed in the future for whoever's next, or should the council choose to do that and also do it differently in the future. So that way, it allows for maximum flexibility amongst the council and for future decisions about different office holders at that point as well.
It's pretty happy.
Yeah, it is, it's based on some other professionals in our community. The average school principal in Kater County makes about $110,000. School superintendent is maybe $160,000, $190,000. Hospital administration is obviously very, very high. But it's oriented more towards professional degrees, and I think it also sets us up in the future that should whoever's next have a professional qualification that the council wishes to reward, we can do that. It also becomes attractive to those that are in the working space who can bring advanced knowledge, and I think over the last several years, I hope you've seen dedication and commitment and professionalism that our community continues to recognize as a desire which I'm proud of.
I mean, it's, when you look at averages across the state, it's quite a bit higher than some of the other cities, even some that are much larger than ours.
Do you notice other ones that you want that, that they have to have a doctorate degree?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't?
You don't have to have a doctorate degree to be the mayor of a city.
No, you don't.
No, you absolutely don't. And I feel like if you go to school to be a certain something, then if you want to make that pay for a certain something, then maybe you should be doing that job. That's just my opinion.
If I interrupt, maybe just to say, what do we think about the idea of the stipend versus the salary increase, right? So paying more for an educational piece, I guess that's a piece where, take out the dollar value for right now, let's just talk about the concept of it, right? And I think, to your point, Dr. King, I think it is worth something worth paying for, right? Because I know there's things where that education brings value to the community. So I'm not saying the dollar value, I'm saying the concept of it, I think is a good idea. Just my opinion on it. Maybe that's, maybe that's the easier place to start. Do we agree with doing it that way, or should we put it in the salary, right? That's, I guess maybe that's a first question. If we settle that, then we can agree, we can have a conversation what that should be. Just my thoughts.
So in theory, just throwing out an age, a 70-year-old guy, girl, lady, was a big doctor. Throughout their career, they've been retired for 20 years, whatever, they decide they want to run for mayor. Would he still pay for that degree for somebody that's been retired for 20 years and a longer in that line?
If you're paying for that education, yes. To take that role, they're stepping into that role, they got elected into the role, but they have that education, they'll support that background. That's the theory line, right? And if we don't like the way it's worded as a doctoral degree, we could, we could change that, we could edit that too. I think we could create an ordinance that stimulates it how we want it to be, right?
There's a state statute that does not allow the city council to reduce the elected official's salary in an election year. By not making it a part of the salary and by making it a stipend, that can be removed at any time by the council through the salary ordinance. So if the next person is a doctor that's 20 years retired and you don't see the value in that, or maybe you want them to prove themselves for five years, you can remove it from the salary ordinance because it's a certification pay, it's not into the base pay. So you're not obligated to have, just because you're a doctor, it doesn't mean you're obligated to do it. If you put it on the base pay, it's much more challenging to remove in the future because it's a reduction in the base pay. To Jamie's point, if you would like to hire somebody with that, or the community, the community chooses to hire someone like that, and the council wishes to reward them with a certification education pay, which is as presented here, then that can be adjusted on a case-by-case basis. Maybe the next person is a CPA, and that's best thing since sliced bread. So you can adjust that in the salary ordinance based on that. I think it's a good long-term. I think it encourages people in our community who have advanced degrees or who have advanced knowledge and education experience without necessarily locking the city into a higher salary for anyone who happens to come along. It gives much more flexibility to the council.
And there are other communities that do this, there are lots of other communities that do this, that have it separated out like this.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Is this, this is not a new concept?
No.
We pay a lot of certification pays across all of our ordinance.
I understand that, to my head of the point. I looked up the mayor of Indianapolis, it was $93,000, $96,000, something like that. I'm wondering, in that situation, does he get a stipend? Of, and of course, I think, although I didn't go that deep into it, but for Indianapolis, $93,000, $96,000, whatever it may be, and then we take $15,000 population of Greensburg, and we go past that, to me, it doesn't make sense.
That's what the reported, I don't know what his total income is, but it's not $90,000. No one would take that job for that. But, you know, he's the president of the airport authority, I'm sure that's a paid role. He's on several boards that are paid because he's the mayor of Indianapolis. There are more earning opportunities that are presented because of the role. And then some of the other individuals also are, they either are independently, that's what we traditionally see, is that the role is filled by either very independently wealthy individuals across the state or are retired individuals who aren't in their careers or in the midst of their careers. And I think with the mayor of Indianapolis, it's the other board appointments and seats on boards that make up that income level. And I don't know what he, maybe the Indianapolis Redevelopment Commission pays him a stipend as well. I can see that, or the Downtown Visitors Commission. I think there's definitely a lot more to that than is reported, so.
You could get the house too. No danger to your questions, or is it the setup, this stipend? I think it's a good way to get them. Any, any other questions?
We come back to what that value is, and I think that's the easier debate. I thought it was easier if we kind of parse it out.
Yeah, I support the stipend idea also. I like the flexibility that it gives us on the out road with the futuristic, you know, part from the amount as a consequence.
Sounds like we've got, most of us are in agreement that we like the stipend, I guess, for that amount. My head, um, here, what do you guys?
I can be on board with the stipend.
Is it effective? That's the next part. So maybe that's where we come back and we kind of talk through what's the appropriate amount, right? But I think, I think we're agreement that we like the setup for the concept, right? Now we just, what would be a fair, or what would be an appropriate amount?
Well, as was mentioned earlier, in regards to salaries in schools, which I think is a good comparison, because that's public money also. And in looking at positions, the, one of the directors of education makes a little less than $100,000. The director of finance makes $100,000. The director of maintenance makes $101,000. The director of technology makes $114,000. One of the principals makes $116,000. Assistant principal makes $110,000. Dean of students makes $98,000. Athletic director makes $102,000. Another principal, $114,000. Another principal, $112,000. Another principal, $110,000. And the two superintendents, one makes $154,000, and the second one makes $205,409 annually. And he has operated less people than the city of Greensburg. That's just making a comparison of the leadership abilities that you need to have. And I think it's imperative that the position of mayor be a situation where people want the position when it becomes available. And I want the person coming in who really wants a job, but they're not going to say to me, "Well, I'd love to do that job, but I can't come in after that amount of pay." If we want somebody 40 years old or 45 years old, we're not going to get them. We're going to get the people who have retired. And I think by the grace of God, we got jobs. Right? And I think it's real important that we remember who we're working with. I mean, if you take the average age in marriage across the state of Indiana, I just wonder what it would be.
So would you, would you pay for, say someone has three or four bachelor's degrees, different programs they went through? Would you pay for each one of those, or only one?
My suggestion, you'd pay for one, right? You'd pay for whatever the highest degree is, right?
I mean, listed on, listed on the sheet, there's a bachelor's degree and a doctorate.
Seven, please.
So would you pay for both of those?
The bachelor's degree matches the incentive, or the encouragement that's in the clerk treasurer's office for Kristin. That is not for me.
And my suggestion, we'd pay, we'd pay for the highest one, right? We can talk about that. I mean, that's just my opinion on it. I mean, I feel like there's something appropriate here, but we don't feel like that value is appropriate. Then what, I mean, what would you feel comfortable with? Half of that?
When you say inappropriate, you're talking about inappropriate is too high, or inappropriate is too low?
Okay.
So which one do you want to go with?
Well, I get the feeling that, I get the feeling that the council feels like it's too high.
Well, the council, it has been spoken.
That's why I'm asking. I'm asking appropriate.
Trying to get my head around the 15% of the highest, your director of finance. Trying to come back to that. And I, you know, I give off the subject here a little bit, but I noticed, you know, you apply that to police and fire. It's pretty significant, you know? So all that stuff is going through my head. So I know it's, I, as I look at it, I'm trying to utilize this to also accomplish that 15% for the, is that correct?
That's fair.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have the correct rules, you know?
Do you feel like 15% is appropriate? Because we didn't want to talk about padding period. 15, okay, is, should it be 10? What, what, you'll be okay with that?
The thought that goes through my mind is just that, here again, I like that, the compression issue is real in, in rural finance and businesses. So that's a way to help with that. But my background is that you would do that all the time, you wouldn't do it all in one shot. So that would be what I would throw out as, as an idea. She, I'd hold it to do it over two or three years. So I'll just throw that out for thought.
I would be more inclined with what you just said, to get to that number in the next three years. So maybe divide that by third and do that over a three-year period to get to that $20,000, it looks like. That would be my suggestion.
I can't tell you the number of school boards that I've listened to that make that, they're in the same area. And then when next year comes around, now we can't do it. Well, you know, we're farmers, our crops didn't do well. The next year, yeah, our crops didn't well, but the other people in the, in the community, they didn't make as much money this year. There's always an excuse. If you pay the person what they should be paying, then it's already in place, then you don't have to play the game in the three years for every year.
But by that same token, if you can't do it the second year, then you don't have the money to do it. If you put it in your budget to do it, and you're short fall the next year, how are you going to pay them?
You can't take money away from them.
Can't take, can't take it away from them. If you put it in as a incremental, or you can adjust it each year, then you've got to play with it. But if you put it in there from year one, and next year the crops are bad, you don't have that money, how are you going to pay them?
I will say that since I've been here in for the last 10 years, much to the council's commitment, the city of Greensburg has been able to maintain and provide pretty easy raises. And I feel that we are on pace to continue to do that. I don't think that what-if is a strong aim for us, not, but it's impossible. But we have a good track record, and I feel like our track record continues to get better and better each year. You've got some people that are sitting here that have been And you've got some people that are sitting here that have been here for years going through this process.
Well, I think we have strong leadership here all across the board. So, you know, on the sit, the concept itself, you know, I support.
I guess my only thought, I was going to say, my only thought here is if we're going to face it in, I don't know. A third, a third, a third is maybe the way to go. I think, maybe we, we hit it a little heavier this year. If, if we were going to do fifteen, if we think that's the right number, maybe we go ten this year. Because next year, once we do another three percent raise, that extra five percent is not five percent anymore. Now it's eight percent or so, right, or something? It's not, it's not five anymore. So it's not five, five and five. It'll end up, it'll end up outpacing us. So if we were going to, if we, if we say, hey, fifteen's that number we want to get to, I, I would suggest that we don't do five, five, five. Maybe the first year we get ten. It's, we could do it within the budget and still stay within the budget.
So if you do ten, twelve and a half, fifteen, how's that?
How, that's a, yeah, because it, it won't exactly, it, yeah, it, it won't exactly be two and a half next year. Because it'll be two and a half plus whatever the other raise is, right? If it's three percent or whatever that is, right? Because you'll have to keep pace with that to still, still maintain that fifteen percent, if that makes sense. Right? So it'll, if, if it's two and a half, then it'd be two and a half plus the, it's three percent. So it'd be a five and a half. And then, then next year you'd have the other two and a half plus whatever. It's not exactly three because the numbers will be different. You know what I'm saying?
I, I would also be a little bit leery in, I, I would be much more supportive, I think, of our, for our teammates if we just did it over two. I think that's much more slay in the hole. Uh, the three gets a little long in the tooth and we, you know, these are issues that we're facing now. And so I, I think if, if we're going to do that, I would, I would favor two years, not three. Um, and to Jamie's point, two, maybe even front loading, not necessarily just half a year.
Well, to your point, we have been fighting this for a lot of years, the compression situation. And maybe it's time we quit fighting that. As Jamie said, we're going to fall behind if we don't just get it. I, I, I would be in favor of just hitting it on, get it done. Otherwise, we're, we're, we're going to be in the same situation.
Any questions or real feedback? Can we back up with fifteen percent?
Yep. That works. I think that is.
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, we've talked about salary. Want to go back to fifteen percent across the board, the highest potential, the top of the board employees?
That's, that's really just, from department heads, it's really just police and fire, right?
Yes.
Okay. It's really just police and fire. I think the other department heads are already in that range.
And, you know, to the, to the point, we had difficulty getting firemen to move up because of that. They're going to take that. We've got a situation here. Well, jeez, he took the bait on it, you know, so.
So you're in favor of fifteen?
I'm in favor of fifteen and I'm, I'm in favor of let's hit it head on instead of, uh, taking it over for three years.
We're just talking about police and fire, right?
Yeah, it's really just police and fire. The other department heads are at that level now. With, if we took the highest paid person, they're at fifteen percent already. This is just police and fire. I get, I mean, department heads is what we're talking about, fifteen percent, is that?
Yeah, it only affects the, everybody else who's within range of that fifteen percent.
Then ranges is over ten?
They were over, either over the fifteen or right around. With the, with the raise, will be, this year, they'll be at that.
I can give you a number. If a twenty-year guy with max longevity, all the certifications and everything he can make, base would be eighty-seven, four. And then he gets overtime.
If we go back to the department head piece, I'm comfortable to say, let's give him fifteen.
I'm giving him fifteen.
She said she was going to give him fifteen.
I don't know if you want to talk about, aren't there, are you guys in fifteens? This is just police and fire, right?
It applies, it applies to everyone. It only affects.
It only affects police and fire.
I, I want to be, I, I'm trying to help steer us away from, uh, public safety, non-public safety of people conversations in that our team is equal.
So do you need a motion for fifteen percent?
No, no, we don't have to, yeah, maybe I should, we don't have to approve anything tonight. This is conversation to form the first reading, which will be on the September. So it's, it's really just if the council's willing to support the concepts, then you give a first reading together for September. And any changes we want to make. There's no motions or any votes required.
I think these are really the, the few things we're talking about now are really going to be the, the heavy points of the budget. Most everything else is really remain, for the most parts, remain the same. There are a few other things, but these are the harder discussions. All right, we'll just knock them out first.
And what about department heads that are not public safety? What are you looking at there?
They, they will get a, everybody else fell in that fifteen percent range already. So they're going to get four percent of their current base. That's what's proposed.
Yeah, so I, I think that brings us back to then the mayor's stipend. If we don't like the number, maybe what's inappropriate, or what's a, what do you feel would be appropriate?
Or if, if you're willing to do as presented, I can commit to no increase in mine for the 2026 year. If you're willing to fund it at this level, and then I'll commit to leaving it alone for the 2026 budget as well. Or if you want to adjust this year?
Adjust this year?
Did you pick this number so you could do that, have it?
I picked it because it's fifteen percent above my direct reports. Max out of Florida.
Police numbers blocked out also.
It also moves it more in line with other organizational leaders in our community in the public space.
I have a hard time comparing the mayor's position here with those other positions actually. It's, it's not an apt response.
I agree. A lot of those people making that, those higher dollars to lots of tenure as well have been with a school system for many years.
That's fine in danger. If you had your next election, you can get somebody to work. Or heaven forbid that something happens to a person that you had an office of the time and needs to be replaced. And you can't have anybody step up.
About Jamie, what'd you talk about?
What if we were to maybe phase that one in? We were talking about doing the phase ins. So what if we were to do ten percent instead of fifteen percent for the next year, right? And we can figure out what that number would be, what we would do to a ten percent instead of fifteen percent.
I would, I would be happy with that, that would hurt.
Yeah, I would support that. I think all the two years, ten to five, there to be. I could support that. I'm still struggling with why, since the concept's fifteen percent locked, what would be the same thing for public safety? But, but I'll, I'll wrestle with that. There's no decisions right now. That's almost, why that shouldn't be consistent.
And this is in our final.
I know, that's why.
Yeah, right, so we're just going to try.
That's why I'm just taking it all in and trying to solve it.
We, we've still got time. We decide, hey, we, I don't like the way it feels. Well, let's change this for this week. We should get some time to do that. How about if we, if we could come back and propose that at ten percent? Take a look at that. Are we, are we okay with that?
First question.
If we, if right now that stipend would give him a fifteen percent above his top threshold? Or if we change that to ten percent instead of fifteen? And then what that changes, that number two, I don't, I don't know. We can see where that comes out after the budget. Are we agreeable to look at that? This is what I'm asking.
Just for clarification. Josh, your base salary would go up plus the stipend on top of that?
No, the base salary stays the same.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That, that clears it up, thank you.
In, in the future, just, yes, I propose it to remain the same.
Okay.
Just add the stipend. In the future, I think it would behoove the council to not ignore the base. Because that will become less valuable as time goes on. In five years, the base is not worth what it is today.
That makes it more attractive to me. The base salary is not going up plus the stipend on top. That, that makes it much more.
I love the base, yeah, I love the base.
Much more attractive.
But in the future, don't let it lag maybe too long.
Right.
Okay. So I will make that, um, change for the first reading. Um, a couple, there was, in, back on the budget memo, I wanted to be sure that I corrected one thing. There's a bullet point that says there's no income reflecting the contract with Washington Township. That is false. It should have been, there is no changes in income reflected in this. Although we did receive word from Washington Township the other day that that will be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for next year, which is about a twenty thousand, I think we're one sixty. Yeah, one sixty-ish this year. So that, the numbers are correct, the bullet point's not, but it also does not, the budget does not reflect the increase in revenue. So there's actually an additional twenty thousand dollars in revenue for the general fund because of that.
Clear as mud. Can we back up just real quick? We didn't clarify on Kristin. I'm perfectly fine with the thousand. He had listed for her. I don't think we discussed it. The thousand for her, I think is perfect.
Okay, thank you. Did he will put that?
That's what my hope is. You have to be aware of this in my house.
Absolutely, yes.
Are we clear on the township? That was, that was our, that was my bet. Okay. These other items are sort of the normal stuff. I will point out though, on page two, um, at the recommendation of Julie Knobby, we did, um, reduce our line item for health insurance. This is the first time it's gone down since I've been here. That is directly contributed to the working spouse rule. And that money has been put towards the, um, base raises for everyone, which is great. We're a year, a year into that. Um, the analysis has been good. Knock on wood, our teammate population has been pretty healthy. We want to keep it that way. Um, as we do, uh, carry a lot of, uh, the liability for that is self-insured. So that is what has happened with that. Any questions on it? I did put in your folder last week or week before, there is a budget from animal control now. It is, um, a little, a little challenging, uh, to read. But the, the prince, the, the concept is, obviously, we, we pay half of that and we also pay it in a little bit of an oddity. So we, um, if you look at the animal control agreement, we had, I had put a placeholder in, because I hadn't received the information yet when we sent this off, of a hundred and sixty thousand. Um, we need to be, if, if we're approving what she sent us at half, we need to be at about a hundred and ninety thousand. So we can, there's a couple options here. We can adjust the budget, um, to get us to what would be our commitment. The caveat to that is that the county council has not meant to do their budget workshop yet. Um, so we don't have a number from them, but we do traditionally lead ahead of them in the budget-making process. So we can leave it alone and we may have to change it before the second and final reading. Or if we're willing to fund it at what her half of the request is, which would be a hundred and ninety, I would change it in our budget and then, um, kind of in theory, whatever the county does, we are covered because we have budgeted enough to meet the half that she's requested from us. There is some more staffing in there. Uh, that's a big driver of the, the cost. And then also, this is one of those things where we run a little bit behind because EB's office pays this invoice at the end of the year. So we really pay the year before in the year current. And by moving us to what the current request is, that would put us more in line for appropriateness, I think. Any opinions of this?
I would say we probably ought to at least reflect in the first reading what our share would be. And depending on how that comes out, that'll move the general fund in a way that we can.
Just a moment, yeah, we've got to talk, we do have the twenty thousand from my, or from the township that's in there. And that is also helps the unused, so. And there's a lot of capital, you know, the capital in here doesn't generate an operational deficit.
No, you're right.
Are we okay with reflecting what would potentially be our max half? Okay, here are the issues. And then that will move us, um, we've got to move, uh, let me make sure. Okay, so then we've got to move down to, um, it's still labeled as nine-one-one IT services, but it's really all of our IT services. It's not just nine-one-one. Josh Tressler is here. I'll try to get this summarized and then he can fill in blanks if, um, if I don't do it right. There are three versions of his proposed budget in your folder. The county has gone through a pretty extensive personnel pay scale, pay rate, pay assessment for their all their departments. And they have granted to a bit of a misalignment on whether IT employees are exempt or they are paid hourly and overtime. And they haven't really hammered that out yet, as far as I know. Is that still the case?
August nineteenth is our budget workshop.
So he, the budget, the number that's reflected in the book, um, which is, there's, there's money for this also in public safety. So, but, but the budget number reflected on page two is the, as it works right now, which is that all three of our IT members are salary exempt, meaning they don't get overtime, which is the most affordable route. The county is discussing about moving two of the three to hourly, which would then qualify then for overtime. So the one that So the one that is, I'm sorry. Do, you guys don't do longevity, do you? The county does not do longevity. And so the difference in that is about eighteen thousand. So what is proposed in the book versus what again is maybe, I'll call worst-case scenario from the dollars side of the equation is eighteen thousand. So we can, again, same thing as with animal control, we can leave it as presented or we can move to, if they move to a job, two of the three people in Josh's department to hourly with overtime, then we would need to add an additional eighteen thousand. I would also say that we could potentially just absorb that next year if they do decide to do that through internal fund transfers. But we are sitting here appropriating dollars, so it may be worth doing now versus.
What do we think the likelihood of them doing that is?
I'm pretty certain that they're going to have us change the two employees to hourly. We have been trying to work through that process, we're not getting very far with it. And as of our payroll starting this week, we actually did move them just to comply with the guideline of the ordinance from the council. We're still reviewing it and just waiting for discussion on the nineteenth. But it, it was.